It looks like Commissioner Lawler is joining for just a second. Greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do roll call to verify which commissioners are participating this evening. It appears that we have Commissioners Ellis, Glenn Winkle, Lawler, Nye, and Winter. At the moment, Commissioner, a call is not on the call, but I believe we are expecting her a little later. So we will move on to Commission Communications. Commissioners, are there any communications tonight? Doesn't appear to be, so let's move on to staff communications.
Thank you, Chairman McCann, Anna Slatinsky, Beaverton Planning Division Manager. I do not have any staff communications today.
All right, then we will move right along. Our only agenda item of the night is a work session on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Draft Development Code. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by the commission. The planning commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes. The commission may ask additional questions of individuals providing comments or they ask questions of individuals providing comments to staff. So, and before we begin with the staff presentation, I did want to make a statement that my firm did work on the earlier efforts with the development of the Cooper Mountain Plan. I want to state for the record that my company is no longer involved in that as this is moving into the development code. So I do not see myself as having a conflict of interest, although tonight we're not voting on anything anyway. So, there we go. So with that, thank you for letting me make that statement. We will move on to the staff presentation by Senior Planner Rob Zeller.
Thank you. Okay, great. So yes, I am Rob Zeller, Senior Planner with the City's Planning Division and the Project Manager for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Tonight, I am joined by Arnold Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager, Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager, Alyssa Maxwell, Capital Planning Project Manager, Brittany Gata, Associate Planner, and Lauren Russell, Associate Planner. We are a full team tonight because all of us contributed to the code in different ways. And we wanted you to hear from the code writers directly during the Q and A portion of the evening. We are here tonight to request feedback on the draft development rules for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan area. As we did last week, because there is a lot of material to go through, we plan to pause partway through the presentation to allow questions and comments from commissioners. Once that discussion is complete, we would resume the presentation and commissioners will have the opportunity for a second round of questions. Does the chair support that format for the work session?
Yes, that sounds great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. As described in the January 24th memo in your packets and yesterday's supplemental memo, tonight's work session will focus on rules for visitable dwellings, design standards, the park overlay, and planned unit developments. Last week, we discussed draft rules for land use zoning, housing, commercial areas, natural resources, and trees. If additional questions come to mind on topics covered last week, this is also something that we can talk about at the end of the presentation. Before I get into the main content, I'd like to revisit the project schedule. After tonight's work session, we'll take a month to consider updates to the code and bring back any potential changes to council and the April work session. In May, we could hold additional work sessions with Planning Commission to discuss code refinements as well as comprehensive plan updates. Barring any new developments, the hearings to adopt those changes to the development code and comprehensive plan could begin this summer. And that brings us to the draft code for visitable dwellings. We'll also talk a little bit about how these relate to the housing variety requirements. Visitable dwelling is one that integrates four accessibility features into a home. These features allow the home to be visited by relatives, friends, and others who may have disabilities, accommodate short-term occupancy by people with disabilities, and facilitate additional adaptations that may be needed by an individual. Since the draft code for visitable dwellings relates to the housing variety requirements, I'd like to review the basic approach to housing variety Cooper. For developments three acres or larger, at least thirty percent of housing units must be from one of four groups pictured on this slide. For sites three to fifteen acres, housing units must be from at least two categories. For sites larger than fifteen acres, housing units must be from at least three categories. The housing variety requirements only apply to the Cooper Mountain Residential Mixed or CMRM zoning district. CMRM marked in yellow is intended to allow a mix of housing types, including detached and attached housing, as well as opportunities for small-scale commercial uses. An applicant may choose to include visible dwellings in their development. Visible dwellings are never required. If visible dwellings are included, then a development may count them towards the unit required for housing variety up to a maximum of five percent of total units. In the example on this slide, duplexes and sixplexes combined provide twenty-five percent of the units in this development. And the remaining seventy-five percent of units are single detached homes. However, five percent of the single detached homes are visitable, which allows them to count towards the housing variety requirements. Therefore, the development meets the thirty percent standard for the minimum percentage of units that must be from different housing variety categories. To be considered a visitable dwelling, the dwelling must meet requirements such as minimum requirements for the size and entrance of doors and slopes leading up to them, the size and layout of bathrooms, and the size of living areas. And that brings us to the draft code for design standards. Both design standards and design guidelines have been updated to ensure that the design standards and their corresponding design guidelines are consistent. Some new or modified design standards and guidelines would apply citywide and not just to the Cooper Mountain Community Plan area. These include changes to street frontage and parking areas, such as a screening requirement for ground floor parking structures, parking garages, and tuck-under parking areas within twenty feet of a public street, off-street parking frontages by expanding the standards to cover commercial zones in addition to multiple use zones, minimum landscape requirements for developments with eight or more units, general landscaping requirements that address irrigation and plant diversity, and new lighting standards within and adjacent to natural areas. This is a section still in development, so we do anticipate coming back with additional changes with regard to lighting at the May work session. That concludes the citywide changes. Now I'd like to review standards that are specific to Cooper Mountain only, such as for building location and orientation, there are no major pedestrian routes in Cooper. Therefore, the standards rely on primary public street frontage, which prioritizes frontages along neighborhood routes and across from public parks. Regarding ground floor elevations, multiple use and non-residential buildings taller than thirty feet in the CMCS and CMHDR zones must have a defined base. This is in addition to minimum glazing requirements. Regarding circulation and parking design standards, some changes affect parking area landscaping, mainly which treeless are used to meet the requirement, as well as off-street parking frontages where no surface parking is allowed between buildings and streets in the CMCS and CMHDR zones. That brings us to landscaping standards. And again, these are specific to Cooper Mountain, not citywide. For example, at least one public plaza must be provided on sites with required commercial uses in the CMCS zoning district. Plazas have minimum size and design requirements, which can only be adjusted through a planned unit development, also known as a PUD application. For open space and landscape buffers, the buffer requirement is determined by uses instead of zones for projects in the Cooper Mountain Community Plan area. Brings us to new design standards for housing and small-scale commercial uses in Cooper Mountain. As discussed last week, small-scale commercial uses are allowed in the CMRM zone if they meet locational requirements. Because small-scale commercial uses are intended to be compatible with residential uses, they are subject to the single detached and middle housing design standards and guidelines. New standards that were just added for small-scale commercial uses include entries, addressing reasonably direct walkway connections, weather protection, and directional signage if the commercial use isn't visible from the right of way, rules for outdoor open areas, which allow alternative minimum landscaping standards for standalone small-scale commercial uses where there are no dwelling units, and rules for lighting design at entries and along walkways, among other small changes. Whenever a standard has been updated in the draft code, the guideline has been updated accordingly. That brings us to the park overlay section. The park overlay includes the desired locations for new parks consistent with the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. In Cooper Mountain, the code specifies park sites to ensure park sizes and locations are suitable to serve the needs of residents and visitors. This is important because Cooper Mountain has many hilly sites and important natural resources that are less desirable or useful for public parks. There are eight planned neighborhood parks and one planned community park, which is the one identified as thirteen point eight acres in the southwest corner of the site. Chapter sixty contains new clear and objective standards for designing public parks in Cooper Mountain. Public parks must have a minimum number of components and comfort and convenience amenities. Park components include categories such as gathering places and sports fields. The standards are based on THPRD's own requirements and their 2019 Parks Functional Plan to ensure that Cooper Mountain parks are developed to meet THPRD's expected level of service. The intent of grouping park components into six categories is to prevent someone from developing a park that only has passive elements like walkways and trails that would not meet the varied recreational needs of residents and visitors. A neighborhood park is typically two to eight acres in size. They are intended to meet the recreational needs of neighborhood residents. They generally include play areas, small open areas for active recreation, green space, and natural areas for passive recreation. In Cooper Mountain, the minimum size of each neighborhood park is two to three acres, as seen on the map in chapter twenty. Neighborhood parks must also include comfort and convenience amenities, such as drinking fountains, restrooms, and seating. A community park is a large public park typically more than eight acres. Its size allows it to meet a wider variety of community recreational needs, such as open areas for active recreational opportunities and natural areas for passive recreational opportunities. Compared to neighborhood parks, community parks serve larger geographic areas and are designed to draw visitors from across the park district and region. The minimum size of the community park is thirteen point eight acres, as noted in chapter twenty. If an applicant wanted to propose a different location for a park, there are a couple of ways to do it. The first is a minor modification application, a type-two application, which allows the location of a park to be moved up to eleven hundred feet from its mapped location. For a community park, the new location must also be near a trail. For a neighborhood park, the new location must also serve the same geographic area as shown on the original map. The second way to propose a new park location is through a major modification application, a type-three application, which allows the location to be more than eleven hundred feet from the proposed, the mapped location. For a community park, the new location must balance community recreational needs with the ecological health of natural resources, be within close proximity to a trail, and be located south of McCarney Creek and Winkelman Park and west of southwest one hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue. And again, for a neighborhood park, the new location must also serve the same geographic area as originally intended. For both applications, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed park location is easily accessible by a way other than driving, such as walking or biking, and that at least seventy-five percent of the land that is suitable for a park, meaning that it is relatively flat and not in a natural resource area. That brings us to the first part of the discussion. Do you have comments or questions about the standards for visitable dwellings, the new or revised design standards and guidelines, or the park overlay?
Commissioner, does anyone like to, like to start?
Yeah, I'll kick us off. And sorry, I'm rereading the visible dwelling attachment that was sent over. Just to double check, the idea is that there's not a, there's not a requirement to include visible dwellings in approved permits. But if people do as part of their development, they're allowed to use those visible dwellings for up to five percent of their quota for varied housing types. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any graduations above five percent? I'm sure this wouldn't happen, but if they, if they included twenty percent of their inventory as visible, there is still capped at five, no matter how high they go?
It is capped at five, but if you'd like us to look at what happens after five, that's something we could consider.
Okay. I'm not sure what the community need is at that scale, so I don't know what numbers make sense. I just, in terms of encouraging folks from different backgrounds and populations and stuff, I'm sure that that's a grossly underserved community just as much as other, as other underrepresented groups. So if there was any sort of benefit to offering some dispensation for interesting numbers above five, that might be cool to explore.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nye?
Yeah, I have one thing on the visitable units. The five-foot path connecting, I think it was like connecting the front door. It might be too weedy, but if these visible units aren't right adjacent to the access point, I guess. A five-foot path is pretty wide. I know there are some city development standards that require five-foot paths and locations, but it might make sense to allow a three-foot path with a five-foot turnaround at each end instead, just to reduce the amount of hardscape in a small site or a medium-sized site. Three-foot path is more of a residential scale, I feel like. My other comment or question is related to the landscape screening for structured and tuck-under parking. I was reading in the code that it requires trees within that five-foot setback. And if, if the building overhangs that five-foot setback, like the second floor and above are property line tight and the ground floor garage sets back that five feet, must mean that's allowed? And if so, that might not be a great location for trees, but other landscape buffer materials would be appropriate. So that's something to consider in refining that code section.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well and maybe also a comment on Commissioner and I. I agree with, maybe there is an opportunity to do less than five feet. I would consider whether three is enough. For folks who do use wheelchairs, they can, they, you know, can be fairly wide depending on the style and the model that the person is using. So you just want to make sure that it's enough, that people feel comfortable and don't feel like they're too close to the edge of that surface. That wasn't even, that wasn't entirely my comment. My comment was a question in the code, in that bit of code about visitable dwelling. You note that there can be a slope of one to eight going to the unit, and that is steeper than the maximum allowed ramp steepness by ADA code. So my, what I was curious about is whether that was intended to be steeper because it's a residential area, or if that perhaps needs to be revisited to make sure it's compliant with ADA.
Brittany, can you take a moment to address the slope?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Chairman McCann. You identified one of the many things in the draft code that we are still working on refining that specific number. So I really appreciate your comment that one to eight is really steep. Our draft is largely based off of Portland's visitable dwelling requirements, and they have a one-to-eight maximum slope for their pathways. We have seen one to twelve, which I think might be the ramp slope. So we are waiting on comments from the Building Division that enforces our ADA and accessibility requirements to get their thoughts on it. Do you have any more information that might be helpful for our edits?
The, one to twelve is the maximum allowed ramp steepness, and there's some nuance there, but that is the maximum allowed per ADA, and you need to be under one to twelve. So I, I this is the first time I've gotten to comment on a draft code, so I don't know why Portland ended up at one to eight. But it is, it is steep. However, these are personal residences, which means they're not sort of necessarily beholden to ADA for public spaces, so.
That's true. There is that differentiation there. So I really appreciate your comments. Thanks for the question.
Do other, Commissioner and I, I see your hand again.
Yeah, one more related to the accessibility. I don't know if the city has reached out to Community Vision, but they're a nonprofit that would probably be very excited to give you input and have been engaged in other Beaverton area projects, so.
Thank you. I actually interviewed them for my last project, and I haven't spoken to them about this one. So that would be a good opportunity.
Are there other commissioners with comments or questions?
Yeah, sorry to come back around. I didn't want to jump down to question three until people had a chance on the, on the first two for the, for the but on the parks item, maybe, I don't know if this is a couple of questions or just kind of a thought, and I'd love to hear some feedback. There was a homeowner last week who had a public comment around the fixed park locations, and I'm, I'm thinking about that comment, and I'm, and I'm reading the minor or major modification options that you flashed on screen around moving boundaries by a thousand feet or so. What are, what are some scenario, like, because THPRD also commented on this part of it as well. What are some scenarios where they would move those current boundaries? Like, how, how, how excited, how fixed are they on those current boundaries that are being proposed?
I could jump in on this. Lauren Russell. So these are, even though THPRD is the main park provider for the city of Beaverton, these boundaries are the city's boundaries. We have worked with THPRD to figure out where the ideal park locations would be, but you know, this is something that we would, we would own the process, we would own the map. And THPRD would be able to provide testimony on any land use review that somebody submits to move the location of a park, either through a major or minor modification. But ultimately, the city of Beaverton is the decision maker on it. We did try to develop approval criteria that worked well with THPRD's needs. So we're hoping that they will be able to participate in our process to still come up with a good alternative location if there in fact is one. It would be the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that there is another location that would work and would meet the approval criteria.
Gotcha. Okay. And then also, sorry, referencing THPRD's comments around property owner compensation for eventually developing or using on that land. The homeowner's commentary from last week revolved around the idea that if these are fixed locations or relatively fixed without needing these modification options, would that put them at a disadvantage for ensuring that they received appropriate or market rate compensation? Is there precedent, and this is an ignorance question, is there precedent in Beaverton for setting fixed locations and then ensuring that whatever the property owner ends up receiving is benchmarked off of some kind of market rate?
So the, the idea of a fixed location for a park seems to be more common with greenfield or expansion areas. It was not done with South Cooper Mountain, but there are other examples of it being done in the region and around the state. So another area that THPRD serves where this was done is the North Bethany Subarea in Washington County. Also, the Pleasant Valley Plan area in Gresham has done this, where they have identified fixed
Park locations on their maps and then um. All these, all of these places seem to have, not an an exact. Like modification like this, but a way to adjust the boundaries of a park that's shown. And then Bend Oregon with their lava ridge refinement area also. Had mapped out all the planned park locations and then offered um some options for. For adjusting those locations. And then it appears that each of those. Park providers do then. Work with property owners for some sort of compensation, but I can't speak to exactly what THPRD does.
Sure. Um, I I would, and and this this came up in the same conversation about the the resource overlay as well, but. I I think in any of those scenarios, there's there's just significant holdings in that area with a number of of folks and. And from a a process standpoint, if there is a way to write into the process. How do we show them that the values were benchmarked or? Or or provide information or assurances that 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 process is clear and transparent and fair, all that kind of fun stuff. I I I'd recommend that somehow. Um. Uh, just looking at the the variety of land types. Between the parks and the resource overlay that are are gonna be at play as this area builds out. Um, I'm just foreseeing some minefield of of. You know, various legal actions in the future as people are unhappy with potential payouts, potential compensation, et cetera, so the more that's clear upfront, the better.
Thank you.
Since we moved on to the parks overlay, I did, I did want one clarification, um, so I noticed in um. The criteria for the location of the parks, I'm trying to find the language. Uh, it says the location has to be easily accessible via neighborhood streets, sidewalks, and or trails and has at least one non-auto route. Accessible to people with disabilities from the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, I want clarification on what that means connecting in terms of connecting to the neighborhood or a route. From the neighborhood, it's sort of like how. Is it just the entry into the park? Is it have to extend a hundred feet outside of the park, or you know, kind of what does that mean? And where where would, how would someone know that they met that criteria?
So I believe I pulled that language from one of the. Concept plan uh goals. But that doesn't mean that we can't make it more clear and objective. Um, I do agree that it's a little broad.
Yeah, I think I think that could use some work, um, and maybe doing so, understanding what is controllable. Um, by. That park development, you know. You can't always control what's happening on adjacent properties, you know, or have. Anyway. Or what's happening in the street skit beyond your edges, so um. I think some criteria would help folks who have to develop this to make sure they're meeting that and they understand sort of what the limitations of how far they need to look. To make sure they achieve that. Are there other commissioners with questions or comments at this point? Um, I'm seeing shaking heads, so um, maybe we can move on.
Great. That brings us to plan new developments or PUDs, uh, and I did want to take a moment to clarify one thing. When I was responding to Commissioner Ellis's question about if what happens if there are visible units, um. More than five percent, I was referring to the standard, but in the PUD section, there are opportunities to look at. Um, higher percentages, so we can talk more about that in the discussion and we can talk about whether, you know, pieces of that should be moved back to the standards. The way a PUD provides flexibility to encourage innovative and well-designed developments. They consider the unique Cooper Mountain context and development goals. The application process is the same as used in other parts of the city or would be. An applicant can choose which provisions to address. Other applications may be processed concurrently, such as design review. Also, a PUD does not replace the requirement for other applications that may be required, such as a conditional use. Um, or zoning map amendment. However, there are two main differences between the Cooper PUD and the standard PUD used in other parts of the city. First, the provisions in the Cooper Mountain PUD section are different than the provisions used citywide. And second, any project in Cooper Mountain can apply for a PUD. The standard PUD is used in other parts, that's used in other parts of the city, requires a two acre minimum. To incentivize the development of different sizes and types of housing, many of the provisions in the PUD section. Provide flexibility to incentivize building needed housing established in the housing needs analysis. These include visitable housing, regulated affordable housing, mixed income developments. And five and six plexes in the CMRM zoning district. To be clear, the flexibility or incentives that are established for needed development outcomes are only for the benefits. Of the lot or building that includes the needed housing. On that note, uh, to promote needed housing, some housing types identified in the housing needs analysis can benefit from higher building heights. Smaller rear setbacks and higher floor area ratio or FAR. Other examples that provide flexibility include lot size reduction in CMRM. Where lot size can be reduced by thirty percent in exchange for more active open space. This provision applies to housing types beyond needed housing, with the exception of townhouses and cottage clusters, which already have small minimum lot sizes. Additional flexibility is also provided through smaller setbacks. In CMMR, smaller front setbacks are allowed with enhanced pedestrian scale design. Also, smaller side setbacks are allowed for residential buildings forty feet tall or shorter. Regarding the PUD Housing Variety and Integration section. The important thing to note is that the same number of housing variety categories is required as established in the standard in chapter twenty. However, the housing variety categories are expanded to include accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. And to eliminate housing groupings. For example, in the standard in chapter twenty, triplexes and quadplexes are considered a single group. And in the PUD section, chapter sixty, they would be treated as separate categories. In addition, each development must meet one of the following. Provide housing for underserved members of the community, support homeownership opportunities, or provide gathering spaces. Regarding the PUD Open Space section, each development must provide common passive and active open spaces. Shared gathering places and tree canopy. Flexibility is provided by allowing minor changes to park locations. A reduction in the size of a public plaza and CMCS if enhanced design features are provided. And reduced open space requirements for residential and mixed-use developments. If more tree canopy or enhanced active open spaces provided, or again, if needed housing is provided. Regarding the PUD Transportation section. Development shall provide a connected and walkable transportation network as described in the community plan. This section allows flexibility to protect natural resources while maintaining or improving key connections. Deviations from street locations are allowed to improve access between neighborhoods and key destinations. And to improve the location of a wildlife crossing. Deviations from trail locations are allowed to, again, improve access between neighborhoods and key destinations. And avoid vegetated corridors, facilitate open space near trailheads, and provide scenic views. In all cases, proposed changes to street or trail locations cannot increase impacts to the resource overlay. I'll also add that this section only applies to streets in the community plan, which includes all streets except for local streets. Which are determined on an as-needed basis by the developer during the land use process. And that brings us to the second half of the discussion. Our questions are, do the Cooper Mountain PUD rules allow an appropriate amount of development flexibility while supporting general project outcomes? Do you think the development flexibility for needed development outcomes will be effective and useful for developers? And do you have any concern that there is either too much flexibility or we need more flexibility? And last, are the PUD provisions written so that you can use them effectively in the development review process? And I'll add, there's just two more after this, but then that's the end of the presentation.
Commissioners, does anyone want to address questions? Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Uh, Rob, sorry, there's a slide, a couple of slides back that had the three qualifiers, um, for uh. There we go, that one right there. Um, on on the must meet one of the following criteria, uh, what's the test for. Um, provides housing for underserved members?
Brittany, can you take a moment to explain that section?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it's so funny when, Rob, you were doing your presentation, I was like, hmm, I hope someone asks me about that, because that could, that would be fun to elaborate on. Um, so in the PUD section, we uh, we reference the Housing Needs Analysis, which is an adopted appendix. Of the Comprehensive Plan. Um, so in that Housing Needs Analysis, it it lays out very explicitly what our. Needed housing is, um, and which groups of of individuals um are underserved and in need of specific housing. Um, so it does hearken back to that, which is a very big help. Um, and in just further, the the expanded language of that provides housing for underserved members of the community. Does list some examples, um, so we would be looking for things like residential care facilities, regulated affordable housing. Visitable housing and manufactured homes, but that that's just um a list of options, so it would really be. Anything that is identified by the Housing Needs Analysis.
Gotcha, okay, awesome. And and the very same question for the next one, the the, what defines a a homeownership opportunity?
Yes, this one, this one might not be in its final form. This is a tough concept, right? How could a development code um support homeownership? It's a tricky, it's a tricky line to skirt, so we're still working with our with our team on that, but right now it's drafted to say. Um, that a development would be quote, supporting homeownership if at least ten percent of their proposed dwellings. Um, are sold um to buyers earning a hundred percent or less of the area area median income. Um, so the housing prices would be required to be restricted through something like a deed restriction or a lien or some other type of contract. With an administering agency or or organization to ensure that those homes uh stay affordable to people. Earning a hundred percent uh area median income or less for at least sixty years. So we, it's really quite uh quite explicit in the code as it stands right now and. Um, and we're still working on making sure that that form can stay in the code.
That's like super interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I do want the record to show that Commissioner Akall has joined us, and Commissioner Akall, I also see that your hand is up.
Um, yeah, I have a question um on, do do we have any plans to offer like rent to own type of housing? Regarding this, um, you know, support homeownership communities. Are we looking at offerings, anything like that, any kind of development like that?
Oh, sorry, go, Brittany.
Thank you, Rob. Um, Commissioner Akall, thank you for the question. We have not considered that, considered that. We are. Um, pretty limited in in the enforcement tools that we can use for these types of provisions. Um. I'll write it down to make sure that we explore that um and give it the, give it a chance, but um, we did not think. In early drafts of the code that it would be possible to do the same type of enforcement for a rental situation. For homeownership, we can use tools like deed restrictions, liens, et cetera, um, as an enforcement tool, but rent rent is hard. So we're gonna keep, keep researching it.
Okay, thank you.
That's a, that's actually, that's a really good entry point for that question too, from Commissioner Akall around around rental, um. And I I've talked a little bit about this in prior sessions, but given the the general epidemic of. Um, private equity firms buying up housing for for rental stock. Um, same for multi-use dwellings and and apartments and stuff like that, um. Uh, there doesn't necessarily need to be like a big, you know, screed across the code around Blackrock can't buy these houses or something like that, but. Uh, have we thought about those kinds of things as well, which. Wouldn't necessarily apply to people trying to hit these goals, because Blackrock wouldn't be an underserved member, but in the rest of the community. You know, they they could price out people.
Brittany.
Abs- absolutely, we um, we're we're thinking about all the same things. We we share, we share your concerns. We would love to find an avenue to do something. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep working on it, but I really appreciate the feedback.
Commissioner Akall, do you have another question? There is your.
It was, um, I think they answered it, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions or comments? It doesn't look like it. Showing your phone?
If we're not with, I just wanna remind you of the last two, just in case, unless we're still time on PUDs.
Uh, on four B, I I feel like this is, like, it's. It's one thing where, yeah, it's it's complex. This is, this is a a complex. Venture to put all this together, but I think that the necessary outcome of that is that there's a lot of flexibility here. And it may be daunting for like a layperson. I'm 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 underwater here in a lot of these terms, but. So maybe daunting for less experienced developers, but but I feel like it offers plenty of flexibility, superficially is what it looks like.
Maybe, um, put the other questions up in case commissioners want to look at those.
Sure, these are pretty broad. It's it's just asking if there are generally any other co-sections that you need work. Or would you like to revisit any of the topics from last week and um ask us any new questions?
Um, I do have one question and I was trying to scan on the side to see if I could find the code section, but I cannot right now. Um, I was curious, uh, last week, I believe Commissioner Lawler was asking questions about the diagram that showed. Um, how. All the housing, or certain percent of the housing had to be within a distance of some of the um alternative housing units, so. That series of sort of bubbles.
Yeah.
But diagram. Uh, I was curious that with the visitor, the visitable um units, do they count as achieving that? Distance goal, or is it only for the higher density?
That's a good, that's something we're actually looking into. The way it's drafted now, the visible units. Are in the um variety section and then integration. It's it's a separate code section, but we've just drafted the visibility section and we kind of want to take a look at how these two pieces connect. I don't think it's clear now and it could be clear, but we're gonna put some more thought into that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions? Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, yeah, apologies for for finding the dead horse to kick on this one. The um. I think uh last week, the hot topic on the resource overlay, it it came through again on additional public commentary for today. Um, uh, understanding that the way that the development process came to be through the dates in which. The growth boundaries were moved and stuff like that, those kind of locked in place. Certain views via mapping and photography on where things should be. Um, i- i- it, my my feedback, and we don't have to hash it out here, but my my feedback is that it it does. It does kind of boggle the mind that there wouldn't be a process now or some preemptive measures that we take now to ensure that those. That that overlay is mapped against current use for uh for the land, um, you know, current tree stands. Current waterways, uh, you know, man-made changes, et cetera, et cetera. Um, much of the public feedback, it it looks very credible and and I I wouldn't wanna, if there. Um much of the public feedback, it it looks very credible, and and I I wouldn't wanna, if there is a way to, I wouldn't wanna throw that away. Um and and force those same people to then go back through costly and 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 time-intensive reviews that would end up showing that the material that they already have was true all along. Uh so if there's a way to include a preemptive process to review the resource overlay map, ensure that it's sound, ensure that it's supported by, you know, multiple layers of some different pieces of government science here. Um that's a, just a strong recommendation from me.
Okay, I think Alyssa Maxwell is going to just jump in and and share.
Yeah, hi, Commissioner Ellis. Um again, Alyssa Maxwell, um capital planning project manager. Also trying to be a resource overlay expert these days. Um I really appreciate that question. It's something that um actually staff have been digging into um since our meeting last week. Most specifically, the question about um whether, what the process could be for property owners to submit um more detailed scientific evaluation of their property, um to get us um better location. If we, if they have better understanding of streams and wetland locations. We don't have a process to change our mapping until these properties come into the city, until they were, until they annex. That's when someone could submit an application to change. And so we recognize that there is, that's fairly unsatisfying for folks that maybe have that information now and would like to um figure out how that would affect their property in the long term for development possibility. So we're looking into options for that process, like uh that might involve other agencies, whether it's DSL or others that actually are the regulators of those types of resources. Um so that's one side. We're digging into it. We should have more information for you all um the next time we're back. And then um the other thing I just wanna address is the, we understand the property, the owner's frustration about why can't we use the um, why can't we use the resources like trees and things that they are now? Or the current evaluation of trees. And the challenge there is that that's ever, those are ever changing, um and that that would incentivize these people to remove their trees now. If they knew that their, you know, that the tree conditions were going to to apply at the time that they annex into the city, then everyone would remove their trees before they annexed into the city. Um and our dates are set by Metro anyway, um so we can't, we can't go back and change them. But that's the, that's the reasoning behind the Metro rules, is that we don't wanna incentivize people to remove things uh before they, before the rules apply to them.
So may- maybe I, and that's a great, that's a, it's like a chicken and egg thing, so I appreciate that. That makes sense. Uh maybe I misunderstood from last week then, like in your scenario of like remove the trees. I had understood that last week is saying, is that, is that until the coding goes into effect and the annexation happens, they're actually incentivized like right now to go over, move the trees. Um but are you saying that if they were to do that today and then the annexation happens, that they would be held to those twenty eighteen standards?
Correct. So our, when it, specifically when it comes to trees, um and those, the defining the resource areas. By defining the resource areas at twenty eighteen, which is the date that this property came into UGB, that's our me- Metro regulated date. Um that, we can't impact, we can't regulate what people do before they come into the city, because they're out in the city. Um and so, uh but what we can do is say that your twenty eighteen date is what's gonna govern um how that property moves forward.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawler.
I'm I'm also reflecting on a um letter that I read this, this, that was, we received today. And it was about um wind throw, and it made me think about um when we're talking about canopies and, you know, removal of trees and then adding trees once, if you do have to remove them. If there's a uh scientific uh or uh would an arborist be able to weigh in about what kind of trees could be planted? I mean, I think about tall um dug firs, for example, or even a white oak. You know, you remove trees around them and then they they do become more vulnerable for uh with wind throw. So I was just wondering if there's any methods that we could employ for the revegetation that could, like, it seems like uh smaller trees, you know, understory trees at the base of some tall trees might affect the uh outcomes with respect to wind throw. I will throw that out there for all you tree experts. I know our chair is a tree expert. And if there's something that we could add that would um kind of strengthen the, or support the uh under the understory, which would then support, I think, the taller trees that are left. That was babbling, but anyway, you, I think you know my gist.
Thank you, thank you. Um I can also add, um the last time we spoke with our arbers, it it was before the ice storm. Um you know, so I think there's been a renewed conversation on this issue. Originally, we had more protections for individual trees. We changed the standards to try to incentivize saving more tree grows and not allowing them to be isolated. We have not talked about your comment about understory and the taller trees. We didn't have that conversation. But with everything that's happened in the last few weeks, I do think that warrants um a new conversation with our, our city arbers.
Yeah, I think we've all learned a lot after the past month. So, thank you.
Yeah, um I will say, I think that that comment was really, um that letter was really about what percentage of removal is appropriate because you do weaken uh the full stand as you take some away. Uh do we have any more questions or comments from commissioners? I don't see any, so why don't we, thank you very much for your presentation.
Hi Chair, um thank you. I just wanted to, uh before we, before we wrap up, uh first, just thank you for uh reading a lot of code and a lot of memos. Uh and looking over the work so far. It was a, it was a lot to go over, so uh we know that we have, we're getting a lot of uh information from the engagement with property owners and developers and consultants and community members. Um we've heard some good questions from you. We have our own list of things that we know we need to tidy up uh in the draft code, so there will be a, there'll be a version two. Uh I guess where, the reason I'm talking right now is I kind of wonder if you had enough of time to go through it at the level that you wanted to. And I'm just trying to read the room, but we're not in the same room, about, about um if if we need to do anything else to help you, help us. Uh we are going to, we do have some tentative uh plans to come in May. Because we'll have a new, we'll have a new version of things, and we can go over things then. But um just wanted to make sure you felt satisfied with what we've done so far with these work sessions, or if there's something else that you.
Uh Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, Brian. I I um, yeah, there's just, there's a lot of stuff to go through. And holy crap, y'all manage a lot of materials, so kudos to you. Well, I think prior to to May, i- if I'm thinking about like what I do in my, in my, in my private employed life, I would, I would love, if possible, to get a, some sort of digest style ver- where I know that all this code isn't gonna come down to one page, but if there is the ability to have some sort of primer or digest written up that shows us, hey, like, these are the most important areas, these are the most contentious areas. You know, these are some layperson views on these areas. Go to page here, go to page here, go to page here. The staff reports, for example, often have a lot of that style of material, but those, those themselves are are quite large and written, or large in in volume. Um so if we, if we go through another work session, it it may be cool to have that, just so that we could pick a day, you know, previous to this actual meeting and just sit down and pour over the whole thing and 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 kind of know, you know, what, which items you think are the ones that are allowed us to look at. Um I know I'm asking you from work, I'm very sorry about that, but um that was, that's my first thought.
Uh Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Yeah, thank you. Um thank you for asking the question, Brian. Um I think one thing that would really help me is to see the staff presentation ahead of time. Um there's a lot of text in the presentation itself, and then there's a lot of um a verbal presentation at the same time, and without seeing it ahead of time, um you know, not only are we trying to digest all of the reading material that comes out before the meeting, but then during the work session, reading it and listening to the presentation at the same time, it can be difficult. And if the questions could be provided in advance, that would help us really zero in on what you're hoping to hear from us during the work session, so that as we're going through the material, we kind of know, you know, what to look for, what to have to to give you comments on. That would be helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawler.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. That's a great question. There were, there were some things that occurred to me. Um for example, the code was about, I think, at least four hundred pages, at least that attachment D. I think it was, exhibit D, yet it had certain sections in there, because you kept repeating, you know, the the numeric, the pagination would change. And so when I was trying to print out a page, I was trying to figure out what page it was. I, my computer can't just select a page, I have to find the number of the page. So it became very difficult without more sections. So if you could bookmark or create chapters or whatever for each, you know, subcomponent of that, for example, exhibit D, I think it would make it a lot easier to navigate back and forth when you're, you know, referring to, for example, in a one later section, you then refer to an earlier section of the code, and it was really hard to find. So to me, there's sort of an organizational structure of your exhibits. And maybe even when you do talk about your topics in your, in our little memos, you know, maybe say what either what code section it is, like parks overlay, you know, that section, chapter twenty, twenty, you know, anyway. A little more organization of the material, so we can readily move back and forth electronically. To me, that's the disadvantage of electronics, is that yet you have to use a little scroller thing up and down. You can't just flip through pages, and so um that's a thought.
So I'm trying to spend more time listening, but I do have a follow-up question for everybody. Do you have bookmarks in your PDFs? Because I do. Do you have bookmarks for the different sections?
I I think it depends if you're grabbing the PDF, downloading it and opening it in a PDF reader versus just directly in Safari or Chrome, you wouldn't have those.
Okay, I must be doing it. I just click on the link that's on the page.
Yeah, I'll do a show in your browser without bookmarks.
That's a good tip, Commissioner Ellis. I didn't realize that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh Commissioner Nine.
Um I will admit that I, I put these here in my calendar, but I didn't pay attention to what the agenda item was. So I um didn't allocate enough time for myself to review the code. So I guess a friendly reminder via email would be helpful, saying, hey, and you guys have done this in the past, but I'm not sure it happened for this particular um sort of sessions that just, hey, heads up, this is a big package coming, try to start ahead of time, you know, kind of thing. Um but I also say um what you guys have done for the overlays, the parks and the um resource overlays, I think, do capture the desires of the community and um the feedback we had from the South Cooper Mountain plans. So um good job there.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments for staff and commissioners? Commissioner Lawler ended still up, but is that just the leftover? Okay. All right, with that, are we, are we done with the staff presentation?
Yes, I am done with the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh I think we will move on to public comments. Uh so now is the time for public comments on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Draft Code. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Uh commission calls on Scott Miller uh to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, this is uh Scott Miller. Uh can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I am driving right now, so you might not hear me very well, but we are, we're just trying to find out for the most part the um significant natural resources. There's like a ton of it there that um we're not really sure how that was calculated. Like how the, how that was, how that's come up. Um what, what are the like, the the rules for how that was decided? What is S and R and what is not? Because there's like, you know, ten acre parcels, there's ten acre sections that have just S and R. And I could understand keeping some trees or something, but ten acres with nobody uh maintaining it is just uh, you know, it might as well not even come into the UGB. So I'm just uh wondering how that was decided.
Is, is the question, can we have staff answer this question?
Oh, sure. I didn't know if I had to wait till the end of the public comment period. Alyssa, do you mind um taking this one?
Hi, yes, um Alyssa Maxwell. Um I would encourage the, if the, I didn't catch an address to know whether Mr. Miller is a property owner at Cooper Mountain. Um I would encourage them, if they are property owners, to take a look at the um a project website has a natural resources report on it that goes through the step-by-step process that was used to um determine where that resource boundary would be located. Um in addition, property owners have received letters um to notify them of the potential for there to be a resource overlay on their property um along with a description of the process that was involved. Um if Mr. Miller's not a property owner at Cooper and did not receive one of those letters, um that natural resources report on the website would still um be applicable to understanding that process. And um we can do a follow-up conversation to clarify um if needed.
Okay, uh do we have any other public comment? Uh I see Sparks, uh please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, uh my name is Dean Sparks. Uh our address is on Tile Flat Road. We really don't have a particular address. I don't know the lot number. Um you'll find us uh on your map. We're in the southwest corner along Tile Flat Road. Um on our property will be a sizable chunk of the community park. And uh we have some commercial on our property as well. I have a couple of uh questions. Um one is, as far as the community park goes, or any other parks, the community park in uh my situation. My question would be funding. Um when the city designed these parks, do they have uh the uh capable funding in order to be able to purchase this land for parks? And if it's not by the city and THPRD, um was that uh looked into? Uh THPRD, if they have the capable funding um for these park sites. Um I imagine it won't be in all cases that a developer would be looking for um uh credit to do that. Might be in the case where a homeowner, uh property owner would just be looking to sell their land uh to the city for that park. And my other question would be, um it came up in the last meeting. The feasibility uh study I I heard brought up, and particularly thinking of our location having commercial on it, um I'm just Um, I'm just wondering on that feasibility study, was, was that an actual feasibility study done by a, uh, a third-party, um, company, or is that a feasibility study done by the city? And is that feasibility study, uh, saying that, uh, basically, yes, small business, commercial will work on that property, or is it, uh, uh, saying a coffee, particularly a coffee shop will work on that property? Um, I gotta tell you, in my mind, and, uh, we've owned, uh, um, retail business and service businesses and all of that. And, uh, if I were to ever open a shop, uh, looking at that location, being located on, uh, the edge of farmland, um, far west of the population. Uh, to me, it just seems like everybody's gonna be going east to do all their shopping. Um, so I'd just be really curious about that feasibility study and maybe is there a copy that we can view? Thank you.
Okay, um, sort of set up a precedent, um, staff answering questions.
Hi Chair, I can, I can take that one, I can take that one if you like. Um, so first, starting with the, um, community park, uh, I think the letter that, um, Tualatin Park and Rec, um, submitted is a, a partial answer to that question. Uh, the, the compensation for the parks is expected to come from THPRD's direction. And, um, I've talked with, uh, the Sparks and their representatives about that site and that, and those requirements. Um, and I would imagine the Park District would be happy, yeah. We, they've already had contact with the Sparks and I would have mentioned that would be, they'd be happy to have that discussion, uh, as well about how that will work. Um, as far as the real estate market analysis, um, it is on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan website, bevertonoregon.gov/cn, uh, on the, um, project documents page. It was early in the project, so it's kind of way down there, um, under opportunities. Um, so there's a market analysis link there. You can read the whole report. Um, it was done by a company, an outside company, Econ Northwest, and, um, I think the key thing to, um, it found a sort of modest amount of, of, of commercial viability in the area. Um, and we did talk a lot about what are the most viable locations and having, uh, visibility from uh, arterial, which is Top Flat and Grand Horn, uh, was one of the key considerations there. Um, it's also not just retail. Um, I mean, commercial involves service businesses, offices, um, restaurants, retail, there's a whole host of things, and the minimum requirement is 30,000 square feet, essentially, but you have to read the rules for the details. Uh, which is, you know, like a couple pharmacies, like it's a couple Walgreens. It's not, um, it's, it's not, the expectation is not a, a giant shopping center. Um, so happy to hear continued comments and, um, ideas about the code, of course. But that's where, that's kind of the journey we want to get with the coast is right now.
Thank you. Uh, do commissioners have any comments? Okay.
Hi, great Chair, just, just one comment and, and this, it just, just helped me, because this also, I think, is for Mr. Miller, the prior question and, and this question as well, but the, um, Community Plan Project website has a couple of different links and pages that includes the, some of the materials that we're looking at here today, plus prior materials, including like a walkthrough of how the, the resource, uh, overlay was built out. Um, so to, just a general encouragement to any of the public members, do what I did and, and, uh, check out the materials, uh, bevertonoregon.gov/350 slash Cooper or CM, it's, it's just CM. It's just on Beaverton's website, so there are a couple of, of answers in there to some of these questions, which, which is handy.
All right, do we have any other members of the public who wish to provide comments? Not seeing any. Um, so, uh, with that, I think that is the end of, uh, this evening's meeting, so, um, we are now adjourned at 7:44 PM.